All right, we're going to call the special meeting of the City Council from Monday, June 19th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Hassenbrink.
Here. And so I will turn this over to our city manager to introduce what we're going to be meeting on.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. This is a user fee study that was -- the City Council hired MBS back in 2015 to initiate this study. And over a process that has taken place over the past almost two years now, interviews with staff and with all the departments, and has gone back to the Budget Standing Committee a couple of different times. We're ready at this point in the study to present it to the full City Council. And at this point, Jason Alamon, the Administrative Services Director, will start it off.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So as Brett mentioned, MBS was hired by the City Council in 2015. And in March of this year, the user fee and charges study was completed. And so that project was a coordinated effort among all departments of the city and took about 18 months to two years to complete. Two study sessions have been held with the Budget Standing Committee in the month of May. Recommendations from the Budget Standing Committee have been incorporated into the presentation and the draft master fee schedule that's included in the packet for your consideration tonight. And it was also recommended that the item be brought forward to the City Council today for consideration. Before I hand this over to Greta, the project manager with MBS, I want to provide some additional background. So the city charges a range of fees for services to residents and businesses. So the scope of the study, though, was limited to those types of elected services. So for example, recreation classes, building permits, planning permits, et cetera. But the study does not encompass taxes. It does not encompass fines or development impact fees, like we have the parking lieu fee or the traffic fee as well. What the study does is it looks at the cost of performing these services and calculates the cost for those services and then recommends a fee to recover those costs that have been incurred by the city. In some situations, it may be appropriate to set the fees at a level that's less than the full cost of service. For example, you know, in situations where there's a direct -- a benefit that benefits the community as a whole, like recreation programs, in those situations, it's recommended that the fees be set at a level less than cost recovery, full cost recovery. On the other hand, services that directly benefit, you know, private development, such as, you know, planning-related items and public works-related items, it's recommended that full cost recovery be applied. Like I said, attached to the staff report is the master fee schedule, which incorporates the recommendations from the consultant, from staff in the departments, and from the Budget Standing Committee. One of the recommendations for City Council's consideration for tonight is to direct staff to bring back this item to the City Council in July for adoption of the master fee schedule. And with that, I will turn it over to Greta.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. Mayor, councilmembers, of course, staff, and I would say public, but I think we're all -- I think we're all staff this evening. I'm Greta Davis, and I actually had the pleasure to work with all of the wonderful staff members here who have a vast amount of knowledge with their own departments and services that are provided. And I believe that that certainly helped in putting together good information, valid information, and good culmination of the final results that we're looking at today. So I have to say thank you again for hanging in there. It was a process. And again, thanks very much for all your help and support. It's important, as we start talking about the methodology, that we give you a little background on some important items to consider when performing a user fee study. So it's important that there is a defensible methodology for calculating fees. It's also important to be recognizing the costs and the revenue in accordance with California Government Code sections, Prop 218, and of course, Prop 26 also. The collection of valid data and a reasonable cost of providing service is also important to note. The law, the language in the law talks about estimated and reasonable cost, and that is what I believe we have put together in the results for you today. And then what we're recommending are fees that can be implemented by City Council. So MBS prepared an indirect cost calculation of the citywide administrative and support costs also, and those costs will feed into the user fee study. The indirect cost was calculated using fiscal year '15-'16 budget costs. And then the user fee study really defines the full cost recovery potential for setting the individual-based fees. As Jason pointed out, these are, of course, cost recovery fee-type services for individual fees that are requested by the general public. And these are fees and revenues that are implemented by the City Council, and they do not include taxes, development impact fees, fines, and penalty-type of items, and of course, utility rates. Okay? Go to the next one. It's important that we understand the full cost before we look at where to set the fees. You need the full cost understanding as the basis for where you want to set the fees. And one of the main study goals is to update the master fee schedule based on what those full costs are, whether you want to recover the maximum amount of the full cost or something less. And these are the departments that were included. It was comprehensive, so we had some of the administrative fees, planning, public works, building, police, and of course, recreation and community services. And these are just some of the benefits of realigning user fees. It reduces the reliance on general fund subsidy. You're able to look at realizing revenue for the services that are either reduced or eliminated. It helps fund departments efficiently and also sets some realistic expectations for cost recovery. We wanted to talk about just the kind of the basic cost calculation and how MBS came up with the costs. So first, we calculate a productive hourly rate, and then we multiply that hourly rate times the estimated hours to complete the task. So that then becomes the full cost calculation. And of course, our job is to identify the correct components that go into that for the hourly rates and for the hours, to work with staff on getting the correct estimated time for providing these services. So I will tell you that these cost estimates and the calculations underwent several draft iterations. I always say we kind of get each other in a room and lock the door until we hash it out and come up with the amounts that we all feel comfortable and confident with. Well, in reality, it's probably three or four draft iterations where we look at the information, we look at the results, we wait a day or two, and then we revise that information to get closer and closer to what we consider to be good and valid information. So these were validated and worked with staff on several draft iterations. The '15-'16 budget expenses were used as the basis for the fee study with a couple of exceptions, and those fell within recreation and community services. The staff felt that staffing costs were better reflected using the '16-'17 staffing costs and also the aquatics program. The '16-'17 preliminary budget costs were used. Jason mentioned a little bit earlier, but I think this slide maybe gives you an additional understanding. When we look at the left side, those are really representative of services that are provided to the entire community as a whole, and those services are typically tax-funded, general fund-funded, things like a police, public safety, park maintenance, possibly street maintenance, things like that, where the community as a whole benefits from. And then you look at the far right side, and those are services that really just benefit one individual. Those are typically user fee-type of services. So those might be a police citation sign-off, the variance application, building permit, engineering plan review, things like that. Really what we talk about within the cost methodology and setting fees is that fees should be assessed according to the individual or the private benefit that's gained, and that's why we show you this. We also worked with staff and the Budget Standing Committee in an effort to maintain value to residents. Some services for residents have been recommended with a subsidy, and those are things like an appeal fee, where we identified a lower fee for residents. And also, another example of that was a special event fee, where the resident fee was set lower. And then, of course, in recreation and community services, there are several different fees where residents would in fact pay a lower fee. This is really the overall big picture. So the total subsidy here is showing at just about $1.4 million. And based on the recommended fees, while it does show in total about $360,000 or so, we're saying it's probably closer to like maybe $280,000. There's one new fee where it's estimated that the collectibles will be lower, and that falls in the police department, the admin arrest fee. It's just that while they would like to assess the fee and collect the fee on most cases, the level of recovery, the collectible rate, is very low, so.
So if I may, a few questions, just a little bit maybe backtracking. So in the analysis of the actual, you said from 2015, 2015? Is that where you kind of looked? So how?
'15-'16 budget costs.
Okay, so you look at kind of labor hours and cost, and then that's a defensible, right? And how easy or how difficult was it to go and extract that data from our records? Is it kind of a neat categorization of we collected so much for these type of fees versus the dispersment from the general fund?
Well, we requested certainly the expense information. That's easily and readily available. We look at the revenue reports. So when we look at the total revenues that are brought in, we make sure that the model is balancing to that.
Okay.
So those reports are readily available. The tricky part is looking at, you know, some of the time estimate information.
Yeah.
Those are typically not tracked by any agency except one that I've ever worked with, unless, of course, you have deposit-type fees where you track that information. So that really is based on the, you know, expertise, knowledge of staff.
But then if you were to take the estimated labor and then over the course of 2015, 2016, it should add up to an equivalent person, right?
Yes.
2,000 something hours.
And that's why we talk about validating the time estimate results. So the other piece of information is the volume of activity, and that information really comes from the permit tracking system. So we gather that information, too.
Okay. And then the other question I have, so you kind of have an actuals in terms of labor hour content, and then a rate that, you know, it'll be a rate today, but two, three, four years from now, it'll be a different rate. Is there room in this study to escalate over the next several years, so we're not stuck at one fee for a given service that may actually end up costing more five years from now?
Very, very good question. Yes, there is a recommendation for.
Escalation.
Including an annual cost inflator.
Thank you. Okay, another question.
Okay. All right. So the next slide really just talks about the total amount that's recommended to help close that gap in the amount that's being subsidized. So the level of subsidy is going to be reduced, and they're still -- we're only recommending 64% recovery, so there's still almost a million dollars or so of a gap that will need to be funded by an alternative funding source other than fees. Generally, that is either grants or general fund type of revenue. Okay?
I was going to add something as well. The current budget for '17-'18 that's also been on the agenda for tonight for consideration by the council does not reflect these new recommended fees. It's based upon the current model that's already in place. So what the council does with this fee study will not impact the budget that's on the agenda for tonight. Just want to point that out.
So I got a question. So when you were doing your evaluation of costs that were actually collectible, and you said some are allowed, some are not, some are direct, and some, I think somewhere in your model, you had to allocate back across. Is pension costs in this model?
Yes.
Okay. Is it direct or indirect?
Indirect.
Okay.
I mean, it's in everyone's budget, so it's essentially an indirect cost. It's factored in and calculated in the hourly rate calculation.
And then in departments like the police, where they get a maintenance and operation allocation based on how much is spent in the mechanics area, for example, does that amount get allocated to the police and then kind of put over their fees, or is it held at the city level and used as an allocation across this entire base?
So all of the indirect costs that were used, and certainly there's the support and indirect costs were identified, whether it be from finance or from fleet maintenance or depreciation on vehicles, any of those costs, those are spread across all departments, including support departments and more what we call operating departments like police or public. So the support costs have been allocated to everyone. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah. And so, Jason, to you, like, city manager costs, where, how does that play in? Does that get allocated to the departments first, or is that at the top? Based on what I heard, I think it stays at the top and they push it down across the base. But I know as a part of our budget process, we actually systematically do it. Is it the same allocation process?
So for the budget, we actually don't allocate costs, at least for administration, to the departments. You typically do that in a city where you can push those costs outside the general fund, but since nearly 100% of our activity is general funded, there's no benefit to allocating the cost to the department, except in the case of vehicles and the technology fund. We do allocate those costs because those revenues or funding sources accumulate in separate funds, so we charge them back to each department. So in the general fund, we don't allocate administrative cost to each department, but the study did look at the cost of administration as it relates to each department, and that was built into the model in terms of calculating the cost of service.
Thank you.
So that, what we've talked about so far is more of kind of the general broad overview of methodology and results. What we wanted to now talk about is each department and some specific items within each department and give you some examples of some actual fees that were in each department. So in administration, we looked at 46 fees in the cost analysis, and one example of these is the return check processing fee, like an NSF fee, where the current fee is $10. The recommended fee is actually, it's $25 for the first, $35 for each subsequent. And that actually is limited by state law. So even if it actually costs the city $50, for example, the city is limited by state law in order to charge the $25 or $35. Three fees were recommended with a reduction. An example of one of these is the change to the business license, so either like a name or location change. The current fee is $40, and the recommended fee is $12. And then there were six new fees. One of those is a collections fee. Currently, there's no charge, and it's recommended at $124. In planning, the fee study is really an important tool for recalibrating fees, and some will be recommended with an increase, some with a decrease. This example also shows the importance of, again, maintaining that value to the residents. So the appeal to the planning commission fee, currently it's $1,000, and we're recommending a deposit of $2349 for non-residents and then $1,000 for the residents.
Quick question. Can you elaborate on the term, can you elaborate on deposit in that element? When you say deposit, does that basically mean that if they don't recover the full cost or use a full cost, they'll get an amount back?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And just a quick question, too, because I see deposits in, for example, the comparisons of other cities, and I'm getting ahead a little bit for that. But are you aware of any models where if they deposit, if they're somehow, they file an appeal and that fee is sustained by the council, then they don't, are not charged that fee?
Yes, I would say maybe about half of the agencies have that kind of internal policy option.
Okay.
It's also a time to look at adding any new fees if needed. So there's an example here of a current fee, again, where we're looking at adding value to the residents and subsidizing a fee there, charging a lower fee for residents. So the special event permit fee is currently at 75. It's recommended at full cost, $427 for non-residents, and then the resident fee is recommended at 150. We also looked at a general plan maintenance fee, and the new recommended percentage is 9.3 of the building permit fee. But it's also important to note that this is only charged on new construction. Therefore, the fee is charged on building permits for new construction that are adding square footage. So it's excluding items like the small plumbing, electrical, mechanical-type permits or a residential remodel, swimming pool patio covers, things of that nature. Okay? The technology fee is recommended at 20% of the building permit fee. This is intended to assist with recovering the permit tracking system, reporting, imaging, storage of the building permits. That is currently recommended at 50% recovery. Because a 20% is already on the very high side. To be honest, I have not seen a surcharge that is above 20. Most fall, I would say, within 5 to 15. So 20 is on the high side. You certainly could recover the 100%, but then it would be at 40% of the permit fee. I just haven't seen anything that large, so. Okay? Public works, there was 77 fees included in the cost analysis. This is an example of one of the fees at an increase. The traffic control plan, it's currently at 450. It's being recommended at full cost, 682. There was four fees recommended with a reduction, and this is an example of one, the grading permit, where it's currently 394. It's being recommended at 341. And then there was one new fee recommended. The improvement plan checks include the three reviews, and we're implementing, or recommending an implementation of the fourth and subsequent review fee of 170. In building, there was 80 fees included. An example of one of the increases is a building inspection where it's a small valuation under 500, $500 valuation. The current fee is $24. It's being recommended at 175. And there was three fees with a recommended reduction. One of these is the building relocation within the city where the current fee is 500. The recommended fee is 175. There's no new fees recommended in building. In police, there were 79 fees included. We did look at some restructuring of some of the fee schedule itself. Four fees are recommended with an increase. There was nine new fees. So some of these were services that they're already providing, they just weren't charging for. And then there was six fees recommended with a reduction, and that's because the full cost came in lower than the current fee. And then about 16 or so are right in line with what you're currently charging. The cost came in line, so there's no recommendation, no change in that fee. So some of these are the examples. There is a new fee called the admin arrest fee recommended, in which case most agencies are charging for that, but your city was not. And it's actually recommended at a subsidy of 225. It's about a 43% recovery rate. And that has more to do with what others are charging in the area, and it's also a fee where the collectibility is low. If you set a fee even higher, it is likely that the collectibility will even go lower, so. There is a fee increase recommended for the alarm permit. Currently, it's at $30. The new recommended fee is 56. The alarm permit renewal, there's no change, so it's currently 25, being recommended at that. And then there's a fee reduction recommended for the citation sign-off, again, where the cost came in lower, so it's being recommended at 19 instead of the current fee at 25.
Just confirm, for the rest fee, it's only if there's conviction associated with the arrest?
Well, it would be nice to charge everyone. We want to make sure that it falls within the justice system, of course. Okay, so recreation and community services. These are looked at in the cost analysis at the program level. We looked at eight program areas, and overall, most recreation departments fall within a 25 to 50% recovery level, depending, of course, on the programs and services that are being offered. Preschool and daycare are typically a little bit higher, 75 to 100%, and that's because the, there's a higher demand for those types of programs. And currently, recreation and community services recovery is 56%. However, there are four program areas that have fallen above the 50% range. Those are the aquatics, daycare, preschool, and special events.
Can you comment, can you comment on industry average for recreation? Is it above or below that, that 56%?
So that is higher than what we typically see. We typically see 25 to 50%. And I say typically because there are some weird anomalies. Huntington Beach was one of those, but they try and consider parking and camping revenue in with recreation, and that's a whole nother animal. So I would say it's certainly at the high end, so a little bit above the average. So this is where the kind of best practices comes in to play. One of those is certainly to look at a comprehensive fee study and cost analysis every three to five years. I would say most agencies are probably in the five-year range. Every once in a while, you get one that does one either annually or every couple of years. And then it's important that if you're unsure, do we need one or not, the things that would trigger a real important need for looking at costs is if there's an economic downturn, you had some process improvement, big budget or staffing changes, things like that. That is really what triggers the need for a cost analysis. That is really what triggers the need for a cost analysis and, and would affect the costs, you know, in a great way. And then you had asked about the annual increase. We recommend that an automatic inflation, inflator factor be included. That can either be CPI or a labor cost increase, because the biggest cost factor that is included, the biggest cost is labor, well, labor encompassing salary and benefits. And then to have a combined master fee schedule all in one place, posted on the website, really easy to find. Most agencies have that. And an established and documented cost recovery policy.
So another question. So when you have in there, number one, the comprehensive fee study every three to five years, how does that then, from the annual, you know, increase mechanism? It seems to be, if, if you're doing it annually, do you need to do the study in three to five years?
That's a good question. It's important to know what your costs are. So there are costs that are going to be, you know, increasing at a rate that isn't, is greater than inflation, right? So there's that factor. But then also, to kind of err on the conservative side, cities can't charge more than the cost. So if, if inflation happens to be five percent a year, and you've inflated three, three or four years, and you have done a comprehensive analysis, and you may be overcharging.
So that's not, not defensible. Okay, so then, so, 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 like I can see, annual increase is tied to labor contracts that we might negotiate on a three to four-year cycle. So that, that could be, I think, a, which has its own built-in increases. But, so the, the fee study itself has to look at the labor hour content, that whole analysis then, that's what it is, right? Okay. Not just, not just the cost of, of labor in aggregate. You look at the, how many hours does staff take to go and, and perform that service?
Right, because those types of things change, especially in development services. There's a lot of code changes and requirements that might add time.
Okay. So I have a question out of staff and Jason. So in, in going forward for the next three to five years, how do we capture labor content of what the services that we provide? It's a question for you.
Yeah. I guess Brett, you want to answer that?
Well, I think if, we would have to judge it annually to see if things significantly change more than the pattern of the every three to five years. So as your point warned on the annual increase mechanism, if we feel that that is keeping up with it.
But that's, that's not my que, my, my question is, so in three to five years' time, I think it would make our consultant's job a lot easier and probably cheaper for us if we know how many labor hours we're, you know, expending year after year. And, and you're the ones probably in the best position to kind of figure that out, right?
Yes.
I mean, so, so again, it's going to take a matter of allocating, you know, touch labor hours to each given kind of activity. And it, I know it's a pain. I mean, I do that at work, you know, every day and every year, we do that. So I know, I know what it's like. But, but if you don't, if you don't start doing it, then we're going to have to go hire a consultant, spend however many months you spent going and extracting all this information, just talking and interviewing people.
Yeah, and the advantage of this study is we now have a solid cost allocation formula that we can model after and continue to use. So I think we'll, we will use what NBS has developed for us to keep that updated, and we will track and see if we're on target.
Okay.
And compare that to the annual increase mechanism, too.
Yeah, but I'm really more of just, you know, the, the, the labor's going to be, cost is going to be what the cost is. It's just how many labor hours get, you know, multiplied by the labor rate, right? That's really what you're going to look at.
Yeah, that's what we have to track as well.
The labor, yeah, hours.
So just to expand on that, I guess where Warren's going though, so if the, because I don't know, time sheets, for example, are the lowest level. So do, do people in the staff just fill out a thing that says, I put in eight hours? Or are they saying, I put in eight hours supporting anything, just as a basic question? What, what is the time collection process?
It's pretty basic right now. I mean, Jason, you want to try to expand on that?
It's paper, it's paper time cards. I mean, I know that Stevens Department has a, a very simple work order system. If the city invested in a more sophisticated work order system, would have a better ability to track time on a project basis, but we don't have that currently in place.
It, it takes a lot of effort to kind of keep track at that level when you get below it. I, I didn't know what capability we had internally, so we're still on paper.
Paper.
But I was, I guess if I can, hang on one more choice. I mean, perhaps on an annual basis, just kind of look at what, what it is. And, you know, you kind of get it close, and I think at least it gives you a basis, right? In terms of, instead of just this big, you know, glop of chargeable hours, it's just, you'll, you'll have at least an idea of, of what went where from staff, you know, staff labor expenditure standpoint. Yeah, but yeah, I know, what was it, ERPs are not cheap and they're no fun to implement, so.
So I think that's basically it. I guess, do you have any more questions on, on the use of fees in charge of study? Do you have?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. So, excuse me. So when I look at this, especially the page thirteen, that really is the summary of what, what we're really trying to do here. So when you get to that, you see that the schedule shows that the, the total, that these adjustments potentially bring in revenue of one-point-seven total. But a lot of it is in Parks and Recreation. And it's interesting, because tonight is like a night everything comes together. So tonight, we have a discussion at the meeting, talking about the future of the aquatics program, which is a portion of that. And we also have a lot of other stuff going on, of what's the future of Parks and Rec and where we're heading. And so I'm just wondering, it, did, most of this assessment, it sounded like you tried to hold out each department individually, not as the city in aggregate? Because it looks like a lot of our recovery comes from Parks and Rec. But Parks and Rec could change dramatically in the short term and the long term. So have we gone as far as we can in the other areas? You know, the police example you used of, hey, you know, I've never seen a cost quote at that amount is a good boundary. But how far did we push in the other departments to, or are we looking at this more at the aggregate of what we're trying to do? Because I'm, I'm stepping back. I'm not on the ad hoc committee that you guys went through this, but I would think that we're doing this because we have a problem. And we have pension costs, we have all these things going on. We're trying to do this, we're trying to not be Westminster and Fountain Valley and the Palma, do a one-percent sales tax increase. So to put it in perspective, we're trying to be smart about cost recovery. So this is our only shot, because it gets worse fairly quickly after this. So did we do everything across the different streams outside of Parks and Recreation? Is this, and again, I'm not trying to raise these fees to the highest level, but I, I'm just curious, because it, here, you kind of wonder if you're going to, Parks and Rec changes, if we're going to really still have a problem.
I think what you're getting at is kind of organizational efficiency. We actually have a related item on the agenda tonight that would look at the organizational efficiency of development services and recreation. And so it's hopeful that the outcome of that report will identify ways to perform those core services more efficiently, which, and I think even one of the comments in the PowerPoint is, if there is significant change in organizational structure, that would likely prompt potentially a relook at your actual overall cost fee structure. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. So we, while the study itself doesn't look at efficiencies, it, it kind of does in a way, because we're, we also do look at comparable fees, which is attached to the back of the report. But then also, like I said, on a related item, we have another item on the agenda that will dig deeper into organizational efficiencies.
So let me ask you, if we're going to bring this back for a different look, is there anything, knowing operationally, we could have changes in Parks and Rec, would you look at anything different between now and when we see this again? Or do you, is this the best we can do?
Are there, if anything, a change of the cost analysis standpoint? It should be, I think, a little, you're considering, of course, you know, I don't know the other study. But I think if you look at that last column, one of, one of the points that you brought up is, are we, are we doing everything we can? And in the departments like planning, public works, and building, the recommendation is full cost recovery with a few exceptions, like those few that we pointed out, where there's a recommended lower fees for a resident in a couple of areas, where it made sense. So I think, are, are we doing everything we can as far as recommending full cost recovery? I think the answer would be yes, because we're recommending a hundred percent in most cases where it makes sense, and then there's those exceptions, right? So one of the exceptions that we talked about was the technology fee. If we recommend full cost recovery, it's going to be at forty percent. That really may not be where you want to have that fee set, just in practicality, what others are charging, or the admin arrest fee. So in most cases, things are recommended a hundred percent unless there's a state law that limits it, or unless it just doesn't make sense based on the service. So I don't know that much.
Yeah, and so Chief, my, my last question on this one is, so if I look at the police, it's the biggest item on our gen, on our, within our budget. Do you feel comfortable, because the cost recovery there is significant, if you can recover costs? You, you're involved with state organizations. What, what do you see when you look at this? What's your reaction now when you looked at and participated with this?
I think that the, I think when you even look at the arrest, administrative fee for the arrest, excuse me, it's, you know, I think forty-three percent, and looking at that saying, is that really reasonable? That's probably reasonable, when we looked at other agencies around the county and throughout the state, what they can recover, because of the kind of characters that you're going to be in contact with, you know, and, and, but I, I think all of these different fees, when I came in here looking at some of the fees, just, you know, not taking as deep a dive as we, we did with our consultant, but looking at those things, I was, I was wondering why we were so high on some of the fees and why we didn't charge any fees for like releasing vehicles, say, okay? Because to me, it just seems like that's something we do all the time. And people need to get their vehicles released, and it's, and it, and it does take staff time to do. And, and I know, coming from another agency, where we did do that kind of thing, and those numbers aren't anywhere near, you know, being out of the norm. I, I think it's very, to me, it just makes sense, and it's, and it really is something that I see as doable, and, and we should be able to meet those, those benchmarks.
Do you think we're, do you think we hit everything that you would have expected to see then? I, the adjustment example totally makes sense, but any other stuff you thought, well, we still could have went a little bit further, or?
No, I think, you know, even like, you know, when you look at some of the, the programming that, you know, that we do, my feeling is this, is that, you know, with public safety, I do want to make sure that we try to get some cost recovery for this thing, especially people that are committing crimes, say, in our city, and they're violating, you know, the laws and municipal laws and, and the state laws. But we're not in the business to really profit off of, you know, putting people in jail necessarily, or, or holding people accountable, or keeping the peace. And, and I don't want people to feel that way. That's why, one of the things that, that I made clear at the very beginning is that we're not getting involved with tow truck services, because there's a lot of problems with cities that, that get involved with that, because then there's, we're in charge of the hearings for being, releasing those vehicles. But if you have a vested interest in keeping that vehicle there, a hundred dollars a day, you may not release that vehicle and say, well, no, we'll come back in two weeks and we'll talk about it.
Conflict.
And yeah, there's a conflict of interest, and, and I want to be above board and extremely ethical when we're dealing with, especially with property rights and, and, you know, the Fourth Amendment issue. And I just feel strongly that that's not something this city, or this police department wants to get involved with. But those things that we did look at and raised and increased and, I mean, increased and then added are all perfect examples of, you know, of what we want to, that, that's defensible. You know, that's something that we can actually, it's defensible, and it's, you can look around the industry and see that as a standard.
Great, thank you. Did the ad hoc committee, anything that you guys want to add that, your observation? I mean, this is a big move for us. I'm, I'm just going to curious if you guys spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah, I guess I'll go first on that, too. We did, I very, I want to say thank you to NBS, obviously very thorough study, for, we had, I believe, two meetings with this and updates. Obviously, from the time of looking at where we haven't updated fees in a long time and where we're at now, it makes some sense to revisit this, to make sure that we're at least doing some cost recovery. The, the point that I made in the committee that I think should be noted here is that we're not, these projections are based on what we're currently doing now. There's no, you know, looking at diminishing return by raising the fees. So we're treating all of these fees as inelastic properties or inelastic items, where we can raise this and we're still going to get the same return, which we know that's not the case. So I'd use caution with knowing that, hey, we have all this money that we're lifting on the table, it's not going to be that way as we look at raising fees for that. So that's one item. So the other element, and they've touched on it multiple times, there, you know, we know it's not, is adding value. So as we look to say, okay, we're going to raise fees for, for the city, but we want to provide value for the residents that we're here to serve, we want to make sure the cost for the residents is, is as economical as possible, so they maintain access to the government that they're paying for. So that if somebody were to come into the city and want to profit from us, we know that, hey, they're most likely going to pay this, you know, as developers, et cetera. But if it's a resident who's looking to do an extension on their home, and they want to stay here and add value, we want to make sure that the access to government is maintained. So one of those that I had on there was to make sure that, we talked the appeals process, the ultimate, whether we want to get your say, your say in front of government to make sure your voice is heard, maintaining that fee lower for residents. So I, I noticed a deposit, it's one thing I have, I did mention in the ad hoc committee, but I would, you know, encourage to look at and say, if it's a deposit and a resident appeals, and it's something where sustained by council or the planning commission, you know, we would look to say, that's a deposit that can be refunded back to that, that resident as saying that, hey, we wanted to make sure it got it right, and we did get it right, so they're not being penalized for trying to correct an action. So things like that, where we're looking to provide value for those residents, that's important to me. That's something that we stress, at least in the ad hoc committee.
Thank you.
What's left?
Sorry.
Actually, as you know from serving on this committee, when we went through this, probably met for two hours. So we, we got a chance to go over the fees, not quite on an individual basis, but much more detail than we're able to do here. I guess that's why you give us the big bucks on, you know, on the side.
You earned it.
And, and I got to compliment, Josh did a great job of always keeping the citizens' needs, you know, in the forefront of, for all of us to keep thinking about. But we did, you know, like I said, we got a chance to look at all the fees in depth and question a lot of them.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Where's I going to start? I do like the idea of the resident versus non-resident for this tier, I think that's good. You mentioned that, you know, some of these fees are higher in comparison to other cities. What's, what's the problem with being higher? What's our competition? As far as when we're talking about commercial planning fees and things in public works and things like that, what, what's, what's the downfall of being higher in comparison?
Want me to answer?
Because this, this isn't a profit study, this is a cost recovery.
I think it was mainly in the context of the technology fee. That was the, I think the comment was, maybe you can elaborate on that, because I think the other fees where we're recommending a hundred percent cost recovery for planning, public works, and building, we think, and we've talked to Stephen about this, we think those are, these are comparable and are, in fact, probably competitive, comparable to other cities. And so really, the, the comment was really more geared towards the technology fee. Do you want to talk about that?
It, it's more in the, in terms of what we would typically see as, when you have a permit fee and you have surcharges added on, like I said, they, they would typically fall within a five to fifteen percent range. And I can just tell you from what we see out there, if, it would be probably big sticker shock if they saw a forty percent surcharge on top of a permit fee. It's, it's just something we just don't see. You could have it if you want full cost recovery. So, you know, that, you know, it's balancing, you know, do you want a surcharge that is in the normal range of what most are charging, or do you want the full cost recovery? And even, even the full cost recovery, though, in total, your technology fee, I have to say, is very low. So the, you know, the department is small, and they have a very efficient system that the contract agency is, is providing, the, the permit tracking system. It's very low cost in comparison. So if, if the total cost for your community is only, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand, other agencies, the permit system, tracking system, is a million dollars. So, I mean, in total, it's low. So, you know, there, there's a lot of, I don't want to get too far into that, but there's a lot of things to consider. But I would just say, the twenty percent is just typically on the high side. I think it would be too much of a sticker shock if you put the forty percent.
Right, agreed. Yeah, because I would personally like to, I mean, I love page thirteen with the, with the summaries, and with the exception of recreation and community services, I would like to see us gradually move towards a hundred percent cost recovery, where the law allows and where it's reasonable, obviously. But, you know, for us to subsidize somebody, you know, printing police records or some of the other things, or, or planning fees or anything, I want to move away from of the other things, or planning fees or anything, I want to move away from that and subsidize more of the things that benefit the community as a whole. So, you know, this to me is a living, breathing document, and it's something that needs to be rebounded so it doesn't sit for 10 years, then all of a sudden we're back here again saying, wow, we're so out of whack, and now all of a sudden we have to raise all these fees because we haven't talked about it for 10 years. So I want to make sure that this is living, breathing, and where we say we're 100% cost recovery, that moves along with our costs, whether it's decrease or increase, that really doesn't matter. But, you know, so we're not sitting here again repeating this because we just haven't visited for a while. So. That's it. And then anything else?
You know what, if we do have one more second, on the Stafford Board, page 80, I did have a question that, there's a matrix in there, it talks, it's in the Parks and Recreation area under special events. If you could page, page there online.
Page 80.
80.
80.
Oh, not in the PowerPoint.
Well, it's on the PDF. Pulled off, I don't know if you have everything in there. Maybe just action or a request, you can send it to us, I guess offline. On page 80, there is a city special events cost where it says the total is 224,000, but we basically recovered 24,000. So I was just curious what those, that differential is. That's a subsidy of 200 grand, I just was curious.
A planning fee?
It was in, no, is that what it is? It was in Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay. The special events that are in Parks and Rec.
Yeah, there's a matrix, almost a full-page matrix in there. And with that, I, I can get that offline, I was just curious. Yeah.
Mandrake staff to notice.
Basically, the item back in July for adoption.
Do we need to vote on that? Is it something we need to vote on?
Received direction.
Just received consensus on direction from the council.
Okay, perfect. All right, meeting adjourned in three minutes.